So we are on item, is it 11:00 AM? Yep, 11:09. We are on our 6.5 item, presentation of the progress and future plans of Lake County Health Services Department implementation of the California Advancing and Innovation Medi-Cal CALEAM initiative. Are they online? There we go. And being presented by our Health Services Director, Jonathan Portney. Welcome, Jonathan. Can you hear us? Something's going on. Is he unmuted on already?
It looks like he's unmuting himself, but it's not working.
Yeah, we still can't hear you, Jonathan. See, the microphone is unmuted at this point, but we're not getting anything through.
Check, check.
There you go.
Hey, good morning.
Just took a minute.
Thank you for accommodating that bit of chaos. Good morning, Board. Hello, community. I have a brief presentation for you. Actually, it's not brief. It's quite detailed. So I hope it's informative about what CALEAM is and steps to hopefully move it forward and cover partners in your state. So without further ado, I will share my screen and get started. All right, do you see a slide screen?
Yep, we can see it.
Great. So CALEAM, CALEAM is California Advancing and Innovating Medi-Cal. CALEAM is designed to improve patient outcomes and reduce health disparities through several measures. And a couple key points, terms or points I want to highlight today are whole person care, which promotes holistic approach to healthcare, focusing on both medical and non-medical needs. And it considers social determinants of health, like housing, food security, which can significantly impact health outcome. Another one is ECM, Enhanced Care Management, and in lieu of service, which I'll discuss in a minute, financing. When we talk about ECM, we're talking about enhanced care management, we're talking about outreach and engagement, comprehensive assessment, and things like care management plans, enhanced coordination to care, members of family support, self-promotion, and comprehensive traditional care. Health equity is another big spoke. And it aims to provide high-quality care to all, that's health equity, regardless of socioeconomic status, rate of ethnicity, also be touching on financial stability, and with the end goal of CALEAM and enhanced care management, increase life expectancy. So that shows if we have better access and early intervention healthcare services, it can lead to improved health outcomes. That's just a general overview. So let's look at expanding this a little bit to get a little bit more in detail. So we're looking at main goals here, and I've identified three to try to keep it simple. So essentially, what we're doing is trying to identify and manage member risks and needs through whole person care. And the idea is to allow us to address social determinants strategically. Two, move Medi-Cal to a more consistent and seamless system by reducing complexities and increasing flexibility, which allows providers to be able to meet their patients or clients where they're at. And lastly, is improve quality outcomes and drive delivery system transformation through value-based initiatives, and modernization of systems, and imminent reform. So to do this, we need to create design, identify core principles, and have a well-rounded understanding of what CALEAM is and how it can deliver it to our patients. So before I go on, I think it's important to identify seven population-focused examples that CALEAM can address. So we're looking at individuals and families experiencing homelessness in our county, high adult utilizers of healthcare systems or services here in county, adults with serious mental illness, substance abuse disorders, adults at risk of institutionalization, go nursing facilities, residents who want to transfer back into the community from nursing facilities, adult and youth transitioning from incarceration, also known as justice involved populations, and children and youth up to the age of 21 years of age. I could go into detail with how these all break down and the qualifying factors, but I may want to save that maybe to answer questions later. So why implementing CALEAM? The way to do this would be to do this through a comprehensive needs assessment of Lake County's health outcomes, and identify the limitations in our current system. And this is going to require things like data collection, analysis, and interpretation of that to identify areas of improvement. And I will reference later that the contractor might be really helpful for this, because the individual departments are going to have different needs and service provision lines when it comes to providing wrap service care for their client or patient. But it is a unique opportunity to improve the quality of healthcare for the beneficiaries in our county. Let's talk about key stakeholders. This isn't unique to public health. Other departments can leverage, most likely will leverage, CALEAM. That's going to be Social Services, Behavioral Health. Before Mr. Metcalf left for the islands, he did a short presentation on CALEAM. And other organizations, like community-based organizations, and jail medical, and the jail, they can all engage with CALEAM to do things like fee-for-service, wrap service, coordination, whole-person care, et cetera. I would like to give a shout out to Elisa Behavioral Health for setting up a meeting with the jail and Well Path to get the ball rolling on one of those spokes, and it will be very successful. So for the Health Department, we need to continue to identify and engage stakeholders and critical partners. You see that I have a logic model and a strategic plan extending into 2025, based on our community health needs assessment and community health improvement plan that we just included about maybe a month ago. We're ready to launch and take this next step. So we need to now work with chip contractor, our Equity Department, and the other directors to let's figure the meeting and feedback loops as CALEAM rolls out, because it's ever-changing. And again, maybe we'll identify a contractor who can bring the spokes together to have it be a primary focus. So when it comes to roles and responsibilities, the, for example, the Health Services, with an organization like Partnership Health Plan, could lead the strategy and execution of collaboration with potential contractor or partner. More specifically, and not to speak for them or on their behalf, but something like Social Services could ensure that the services reach the most vulnerable through CALEAM, based on our target population, Community Health Improvement Plan. Behavioral Health could obviously provide mental health services, and SafeRx supports. And community-based organizations could be essentially used for reaching out to community partners and their target populations to further engage them into the network. And the jail, upon release, or while people are patients there at the facility, making sure that they have all the resources through our contractor, Well Path, to ensure upon release they're connected to one of these spokes, the service providers, for wraparound services for care. It's simply how we come together to try to figure it out, to address this DHNA and the Community Health Improvement Plan. That's our goal. We always want to make sure it's correct. So when we roll this out, ideally, it's going to be a phased approach. And as I expressed, we have our initial assessment pretty much done. There is something that I'm a little bit hesitant on when it comes to jumping the gun and roll out, and a quote actually comes to my mind. I believe it's if we find ourselves on a committee or on a stakeholder group discussing the needs of a particular group, and when we look around, a certain stakeholder isn't represented, we should be highly skeptical of a conclusion that we reached. And so based on my review of the Community Health Improvement Plan, which was done absolutely amazing with our partners, I really feel like we need to lean a little bit more into our tribal communities and get their feedback and bring them to the table, so that we can ensure that we are meeting all of our key performance indicators for all populations, So with our challenges and solutions, time is going to be one of our biggest challenges with system integration. Right now, I've noticed that a lot of departments work off of different electronic record systems. I noticed that there isn't a point person for staff training in CALEAM that I know of, right? To ensure continued and seamless delivery. When it comes to warm handoffs, I know that there are organizations like the Community Hub that are off somewhere, stakeholders can call this hub, then they'll be able to connect them to resources. But I'm really interested in the feedback loop of how that works, so that we can integrate that into our future Community Health Needs Assessment to share in the success of improving the health disparities in the county. So that's going to be a challenge around how we strengthen our communication system in the county. Challenges will be addressed through things like risk assessments and management approaches. Again, I really feel like a point person's going to be needed to do this full-time. So we're trying to still figure that out, at least internally for our department, what that looks like full-time, but I think at the county level, we should really maybe try to consider that. And I just believe that this structure approach will create for a smoother implementation process, especially as deeper service changes or new service lines come out in different departments, it'll be good. So potential impacts, I think that that's the idea, right? Why are we doing this? What is going to be the benefit of time and effort? And so the successful implementation will significantly improve health outcomes for Medi-Cal and beneficiaries in Lake County, offer an opportunity for more equitable, efficient, and effective healthcare systems, and it will improve the lives of our residents and the well-being of our staff members, I believe as a whole. And I believe that our KPIs will be more easily monitored and evaluated, once we're able to quantify how the impact we're making through CALEAM and seamless service delivery, wrap service care, equity of care is demonstrated through our efforts. So as far as timeline and steps, full implementation of this, to have a seamlessly fluid running system, I believe is two to three years, period, just because of the adjustments and policy change and allocation, funding, et cetera. So I put this out to a 2025 full rollout date, where it pretty much hopefully is running itself. And what I ended up doing, which you can see here, is on the agenda, is I put together somewhat of a logic model of sorts to talk about, make them smart goals essentially. So, and the resources needed, action that is expected to be taken, objective, key performance indicators, which we will revisit as we start our processes. And that is all I have for you today.
Okay, Jonathan, thank you very much for your report. Supervisor Sambatia?
Yeah, thank you for the report. I know that this has been in the works since 2022. We're now in July 23. Just kind of curious, I know that there were some conversations between different departments coming together to kind of figure out how to position ourselves and how to better understand CALEAM. Are those, I used to be invited to those meetings, I'm no longer invited, so I don't know if they aren't occurring. Are there departments, Social Services, the Sheriff, Public Health, Behavioral Health, are you still meeting to discuss the continued effort of what is collaboration, what is cooperation, what does data collection all look like, or has that not continued in the same sense as it was before?
Oh, I just got back from leave. January leave for a month, so I'm still clearing my inbox and my emails. But I know we have a meeting with key stakeholders coming up here, I believe on the 18th, to at least start with Well Path and the jail and those services. Yes, to your first point, that this rollout did start in 2022, but some of these didn't go live until January 2023. So I believe there's a lot of catching up to do on my part, but what I have seen is especially highlighting some partners in Social Services, they know their stuff over there when it comes to CALEAM, so I'm looking forward to connecting with them and hearing about changes and development, and how I can work with them and how I can work together to continue moving the ball forward.
Thank you for that. And then you spoke a few times about a contractor, and from what I understand, your meaning of that is somebody to take the lead on the, again, the collaboration and cooperation between departments as well as stakeholders within the community. I don't know if the discussions, again, going back to those meetings where we were all coming together to kind of foresee what was coming and how to position ourselves, has there been a decision that that is not a capability within the county departments already, and that we need to look for a contractor? Or is it possible that within our staffing, and again, not looking only at your department, looking at the entire county, that we are capable to create that leading position or leading division to make sure that there is that cooperation and collaboration?
I think we're more than capable. That's not even a question. And I actually think it would be a great idea to have this be a designated department within the county, because this is kind of sticky like it when it comes to funding, right? We're looking at fee-for-service and reimbursement. If this health, for example, if the whole thing was health, for example, in public health, then my concern would be, for example, like Social Services would do, or Behavioral Health would do service, right? And it would get billed to the wrong department. And that's what I really want to try to avoid. And I just don't know the logistics of how all that works yet, but yes, to your point, I believe that we do need to have and create some type of division, and I would really like to meet with the rest of the stakeholders and see if that is something that they would find valuable as well.
Okay. And I think one of my asks, and I'm, again, only directing based on the presentation, so it's not a direction to you, I think it's more of working with our admin and figuring out, what does that cost look like? Because do we have the capacity within our staff already? Do we need to have additional staff and set them aside to focus on CALEAM, but still fulfill our other programs and needs from the community? I'd like to know what that cost looks like, what that organizational chart looks like, to make sure that we are having those conversations and making sure that collaboration and cooperation is happening. And I guess my last point is, I feel like CALEAM is something we should have always been doing, and I'm glad that we're being pushed into doing something like this. I know I just went to visit Arizona, they don't have a CALEAM, but they are doing it in that county to a certain level, making sure that there's connections, especially when people are coming out of jail, and so on and so forth. So I appreciate what's being accomplished by the mandate of CALEAM. But I guess I personally would like to challenge us that our goal is not just equity in healthcare, but to get people out of Medi-Cal and out of poverty, because the issue is poverty here. And I think that we're trying to recalibrate in the equity of how people with access to resources versus people without access to resources can be treated in a fair way when it comes to healthcare. If we can help people also get out of the poverty situation, then they would also rise up on the ability to access other things. So that is one of the challenges I would like to ask for whatever team we create, that it's not just providing services, it's to help to elevate the people we are serving, so that we don't have to continuously serve them, they can become more independent. So I appreciate the presentation and the dialogue, but I think this is something that I would like to see come back to us on a regular basis, to make sure that we track how this is moving. This is an important program, and I'd love to get some of the answers to some of the questions that I provided.
I'm in complete agreement with us, you know, staying in touch with this, coming back, you know, very often. It's a very large program and big lift for us to do, obviously. So yeah, I would appreciate the, maybe quarterly or something like that, reports coming back to us to look at these things for sure. So Supervisor Green, go ahead.
Yeah, obviously, we want to track this as best we can. I might disagree slightly with the existing capacity within the county, spanning multiple departments, as has been explained here today. And to their request, somebody needs to be on point, I totally agree. I just don't know who to put on point right now. Would it be Health Services, DSS, BH, some ad hoc committee thereof? And there are so many bullet points in this, and also so many ongoing initiatives, the Community Health Improvement Plan, Community Health Needs Assessment. So even if we craft this great unified vision, it is going to eventually drill down into whatever department has to meet whatever mandate in their particular program or programs. So I guess my takeaway today is this is a big lift, much bigger than Care Court, and to use that as an analogy, and I think we're kind of struggling to connect some of the dots on Care Court. I'm not saying we're not meeting, I'm not saying we're not making progress on that, I'm just not well apprised of how we're doing. And I see some potential for struggle, just looking at the logic model and all the bullet points and stuff like that. So I appreciate this presentation as far as bringing us up to speed on what Health Services has been doing. I suppose we could ask for similar presentations from other departments on their initial steps, but I agree, maybe turn into CAO or have the department heads take some internal meetings without us necessarily boxing them in. But I do have concerns about our existing capacity to tackle a project that's big. So I am open to the idea that one or more consultants can help facilitate at least the creation of that initial plan, and then we may have capacity to actually execute that plan. But I just am concerned about putting this level of responsibility for all these bullet points for a new program, trying to implement it in the next two to three years, without really having a point strategy. So those are my comments.
Thank you. And obviously, this was a report only, just to keep us updated on where we're at in the process. So if there are no more questions from the Board, I'm going to go ahead and open it up to the public, for public comment, public input.
I just stopped by. So Jillian Perillo, I was just really interested to hear about, there is a community health improvement plan that Jonathan said is finalized, and wondering if we can get a copy of that, because, I mean, I believe that the health issue here in this county is in pretty awful circumstances right now. So many people without being able to get a primary care physician, and the access is really quite difficult. And so I just really think it's a huge focus for this county, and I'm delighted that we're going to be moving ahead and putting more resources on it and making it a true priority. I agree with you, Bruno, that poverty is a big thing, but people being healthy and being able to work is really a part of getting out of poverty. So if we could see these reports that are coming out, that would be terrific. Thank you.
If it would appease the public and the Board, I think it would be our Equity Department's honor to present that, but that's okay. And our stakeholders. It wasn't just a Health Department effort, it was a heavy lift from a lot of stakeholders. So if the Board is okay with it, I would like to reach out to the stakeholders and see if we could put something together to present that to the Board and the public.
Would you request currently to just get a copy of the Community Improvement Health Plan, or, you know, where to find these resources? I think that was the specific request, but go ahead.
And I think that's a good thing for us to, again, continuously be faced with the reality of what we need to try to change in our community. And that is a challenge for us to take on, and the more we can see these reports and have them presented to the Board of Supervisors, rather than just individuals. I know Hope Rising was a collaborative, it was a collaborative effort with stakeholders in Hope Rising to put the chip together. That has been accomplished. I've just been reading through it and looking through it and having a couple meetings about it, so it is available, but making it more massively available, especially through the medium of the Board of Supervisors' meetings, I think is a good thing, so that we can speak about it and really kind of understand what are we doing about it, because it's going to be the strategic plan for what it is we're trying to tackle with taking care of health inequities.
Okay.
So I agree with the presentation in the future.
Yep, we agree with that also. All right, so there you go. Absolutely, Jonathan, if you can help coordinate this and lead it, that would be great to come back at a future date. All right, Joan, come on up. Please state your name.
Well, I agree with the last speaker, and I would like to take one step further and say that I believe the reports should not only be available to the supervisors, but they should, I think they should be available to the public, in the public libraries. Many of the people in poverty, you know, I have been in poverty, and it's very difficult to get things off the internet and in the public. And I think there should be public documents that people can look at in the public library that are not dependable, not dependent on a computer. Not everybody has a computer and access to the internet. And a lot of them, the people that don't have them, are in poverty. And so we need to include the people in poverty so they can have access to these reports without so they can have access to these reports without having a public computer. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Joan. Anyone in Zoom? Any hands up?
No hands in Zoom.
Come on up. Got another public comment, please?
Nica Beck-Cassito, just a quick question on what is available at the moment and where we could access that information on the internet?
Jonathan, I don't know if you want to take it up or Bruno?
So I know the CHNA, Community Health Needs Assessment, is available online. I'm not sure if the Community Health Improvement Plan, often known as the CHIP, has been updated online. After this, I will talk with our social media team and see if they posted it. And if it is not posted, then I believe I heard the recommendation or direction given me was to put it on the board agenda. So the CHNA is available. I'm not sure if the CHIP is, to answer your question.
Okay. Could you repeat a website to find that again?
Yeah, if you look at our Facebook website, our link. I'm not a Facebooker, I'm sorry. So I don't know the appropriate term to use. But what you could type in is Lake County, California, Community Health Needs Assessment. And it will most likely come up. And on our Facebook page, I believe it was posted at one point in time.
Thank you.
Yes.
Did you have a comment, CAO?
No, I'm sorry. I just have one quick comment. Laura McAndrews-Sammell, Lake County Chamber of Commerce. If you go to the Hope Rising website, all of those reports are there, the Community Health Needs Assessment, and I believe the CHIP is also there. So it's just easy, easier access that way.
And I'm on the website. At this moment in time, I haven't been able to find the CHIP report. Definitely can find the CHNA, the Community Health Needs Assessment. And I will keep looking and see if I can provide that link over to admin and so we can post it on our social media. I know I've seen it, but I also know it was submitted to me for meetings, for review and final discussions. And those were just happening, I think, two or three weeks ago, so.
Okay, hopefully that answers the question.
The Community Health Needs Assessment was like phase one and the Community Health Improvement Plan is essentially phase two, second information from the CHNA and transition that information into action. And so that's why this is a really exciting time.
Okay. Any hands up in Zoom? No, no hands up in Zoom? All right, this was an informational item. Thank you very much, Jonathan. We look forward to the future agenda items as we're moving forward. And like I said, like you pointed out very well, all stakeholders in Lake County. So a big lift as we continue moving forward. So thank you very much for the update. And good to have you back from your leave.